I'd like to call this meeting to order today for our board meeting for August 11, 2022. And welcome everybody here today and everybody that's in the virtual world. Our first item on the agenda would be the invocation. Pastor Kiss?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
So desirable, please pray with. Gracious and loving God, we pause for a few moments to offer our prayer, petition, and thanksgiving to you. We thank you for your abundant love that even though we come from all different walks of life, yet you love us all the same. Thank you for the many blessings also we receive from your hands daily. Oftentimes they come in the little things we frequently they forget it, like the gifts of good health or friendship, of a job, of having enough money to live on and then some more. We thank you for our freedom without which our lives would be dramatically different. So we pray for peace to reside in our midst, and we pray that you would help us to be good stewards of all that we have received from you. How do we thank you for our home, the Lord and that? You're so grateful for its beauty that surrounds us. We are grateful for its people with whom we partake in life in this pleasant land. We thank you for our elected leaders who labor to make this place even more beautiful and more pleasant and more welcome. So we ask that you would be with his works tonight as they work towards the common good of our home, grant them wisdom and understanding, and may their decision be made in a way that will be most beneficial to all of us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, next item is the pledge of allegiance. All stand please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice.
Richard, you want to mention about the Jim's out?
Yeah. Yeah, I thought I'd get that through before we do the agenda.
Right.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are missing two board members tonight. They are out. And Mr. Tadlock, you want, you think we should make a motion or anything toward?
We, we do have one board member that wants to participate virtually. So under the remote policy, remote participation policy, the board does need to allow or vote and allow Mr. Long to participate. And is he on? He's not on.
Well, I move that we allow him, assuming he comes in.
All right. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion to second? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right. Is that all we need to do now, Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, now we'll go for the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda or additions? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right, have a motion to have second.
Just had a question, though. We could consider these public hearings not kind of carry over.
Well, we're not going to have board members here tonight.
Need to remove it from the agenda.
Yeah, and that will change the agenda.
Yeah.
But you're certainly right, so we usually carry them over to our next meeting, which will be September the first.
Well, we could have the, the one that's an actual public hearing.
Right.
Have the public hearing, but continue any action over to then. Because unless we somehow, with no way we're going to get the information at the time for people not to show up, and that wouldn't be very good either.
Still want to stay on the agenda, or would?
Yeah, what you could do is have the public hearing, and then that way in September, you would just need to take action.
Right, have the one we've already had the public hearing on.
That's correct.
Do we need to remove that from the agenda or just let it go as is?
Well, I would just leave that on there, and then what you could do is just announce that to them.
Right, now second.
All right. So I got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from July the 14th, 2022, and June 20th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we continue those over to September the first.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item is a resolution for Trey Felton. Mr. Felton, you here tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Well, Mr. Tadlock, you want to read the resolution?
I think Mr. Basie was going to.
All right, Mr. Basie, be fine.
Or I don't mind reading it either.
No, no. Whoever wants to do it is fine with me.
All right, I'll take it. A resolution honoring Trey Felton. Whereas only 11 individuals from Virginia competed in round one of the Scripps National Spelling Bee held outside of Washington DC, and whereas every year millions of students from all over the country participate to qualify for the Scripps National Spelling Bee, and whereas for the first time ever, a northern ex-student qualified to compete in the Scripps National Spelling Bee, and whereas Trey Felton proudly represented the county of Northumberland at the National Spelling Bee, the county recognizes all the hard work and dedication that he has put into this competition while continuing to applaud him for making it thus far. Now therefore be it resolved that Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Trey Felton on such a great accomplishment and wishes him much success in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution is hereby adopted on this day, August 11, 2022.
All right, thank you, Mr. Basie. It's a pleasure, the board.
I move that we approve this resolution second.
All right, we got a motion to second. Any other comment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item on the, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is the update from the Virginia Department of Transportation. And that's Mr. David Beal.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you, sir. You may have to loosen that thing up a little bit.
I gotta loosen that one down the bottom.
It's good to be here.
Good seeing you, Mr. Beal.
I just had a brief report this evening. We cleaned some ditches and pipes on 200. We've done some shoulder repairs on 200 and Ditchley and down at Bluff Point. We did some brush cutting on various routes throughout the county. We've continued to patch potholes and mow for site distance and address work orders countywide. We have additional ditch cleaning planned on 200, additional brush cutting on 200. We'll keep up with the potholes. The, the mowing is underway. They've started with the litter pickup on the primary routes, and we have some ditch cleaning planned on Fruit Plain. Surface treatment schedule is still under construction. The good news on the Cape Seal and Plan Mix schedule is all that work is completed minus the striping. We're still waiting for some permanent striping in a few locations, but all the actual pavement work is complete. In Clarktown Road, we're still waiting to surface treat that later this year. I did update the structure and bridge section. Those, those projects, 604 and 605, the scour repair on those projects, that's out to add now. 601 Bush Mill Creek will go out to add in December. So hopefully we get a responsive bidder here in the next 30 days or so, and we're able to award those two routes later this fall. Those are the only updates I have for you. If you have anything for me, I'm happy to take them.
All right, and the board members have anything, Mr. Beal?
I do, but the way they striped the road in Burgess is back just to be like it was, but it's not a very good situation to me when they cut it down to one lane as soon as you go through the light westbound and got all that pavement over there that you're not supposed to ride on with nowhere for the cars, like in the left lane to turn into the Buick with heavy traffic out. I saw probably five or six cars stopped there today or yesterday waiting, who I called waiting to make the turn with oncoming traffic. And they got all that pavement over there that the way they striped it. I know it's somewhat a wet was before, but have you been done looked at? I mean, it goes to one lane as soon as you go through the bound.
Yeah, we were through there today. I know they messed it up initially, and they went back and eradicated it and redid it.
Yeah, I mean, couldn't they have left that two lanes to at least he get by the Buick and still done their big bow with them? I never quite understood what it was like in the first place, but it's really senseless. Y'all paved a lot of pavement there for the Buick to have a parking lot.
Yeah, let me look into it, and I'll get back with you.
All right, I gotta give you a call, just watch. There's certainly five or six cars stopped in the road waiting for that car to make a turn, which he couldn't because of oncoming traffic. And with all that pavement over there, if it's still two lanes, see you get by the Buick, I mean, it would have been a lot more practical.
Okay.
And the other thing is on that same point, by having that stripe there, you could have, and I've seen it, I'm sure Ronnie has too, tractor trailers parking over there because that's where your line is, you can then park over there.
That's what I meant by the, you paved a nice parking lot for the Buick, because that's what the trucks and all park on that whole section over there.
I think the intent was to avoid having a trap lane, have that right lane, everybody in that lane have to turn right, and so you merge them ahead of that, but try to avoid a trap lane.
But you got to, as soon as you get by, there comes road, comes out and it's striped, go back to making the turn to go down 644 Hacks Neck Road or into the church. But I don't think they could have used more of the highway, like maybe that 40 got there.
Okay.
You take a look at it.
I mean, why couldn't they just do two lanes and then say merge left or right, whichever way you want to do it, like you have coming into town, especially on the four lane outside there, you got move, you know, move right or left, whichever way is best appropriate, even if you have it all the way up to Hacks Neck Road. Because otherwise, you will have tractor trailers, trucks parked there, which will totally block anybody wanting to go further west, and they can't then, because it's solid line, they can't go around.
Okay, I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, you see tracking trailers out all the time.
Oh, I know that.
Always parked there. You could see two to three, I've seen it now before, parked on that right side after the light.
And it's going to be, the sheriff can confirm, but that's going to be totally legal because they're on the, the outside of the white line.
I mean, I could always put a sign up.
Well.
Yeah, well, they pay attention to it and that's another thing.
Won't be legal, then.
I know.
But I'll look into it, I'll get back.
Could you also, could you, I'm just suggesting, what at the light, what if you were to put some turning hours or pointing hours on the asphalt there in each lane directing, telling the, telling the drivers what those lanes were for, if they were on turn, left turn only, or, or left turn, left turn straight through?
As long as you've got only one lane and that line, it's going to be only one way.
Yeah, but.
You'd have to do two lanes.
Yeah, but when you look across, you still are assuming that it's another lane, and your light only has a, doesn't tell you anything different.
I know. I'll look at the whole intersection, and we'll get back with you.
And the other issue is because you got Hacks Neck actually so close, it does cause some issues. I mean, you got almost a ski slalom doing this number.
Yeah.
And from Burgess on down there, what are, were they like temporary reflectors they put in the road that others fight? Down there, it's two sets of dotted lines down when you feel like from the dollar stone up and about that far, about 12 inches apart, where they had the reflectors at, or they're still there, you can still see them, and where they actually painted the line. They didn't paint where the reflectors were.
Okay.
And in a lot of places, a good 12, maybe 20 inches apart. Now, which one was right, which one was wrong?
And then there's a degree of reflectiveness to those things that are inset into the pavement, too. Some are very reflective, and some of them, they hardly reflect at all.
You're saying the new ones?
I can't remember whether they're new or old, but there, there is a big difference. Sometimes you can see them lining up, you know, 500 feet, and then sometimes you have 500 feet with basically so little reflectiveness, it's hardly worth it. I can tell you, the older I get, the, I need stuff in the middle of the road. And I think it's in someplace that they've actually done the new asphalt.
I'm sorry, done the new what?
In whether you've actually done the new asphalt between Heesville and Cedar Point Road.
You're saying in the new section?
I think so, if I remember right. Because it was also a rainy night, and that compounds, if you're raining and less reflective, and you also don't have your permanent reflective painting of either, so that kind of makes, it compounds it.
Right. All right, we'll have some stuff to follow up on. You have anything else?
That's all I have. That's enough, isn't it?
He agrees with you. Tom.
One, I want to thank you for doing what y'all did on 200, the Maritica Church with that slight wash it on the side of the road I mentioned last month.
Okay.
Because now the only question is, how much of a problem is that? Is that going to?
I talked to superintendent after the meeting last month, and he said it wasn't a, wasn't a big deal.
Because I remember saw them rip wrap the last time, and then when I see pavement to the edge, a little bit eating, I got to worry about that. But I thank you for that. The boring underneath 360 before you get to Burgess, where does that status of that?
I've got a contractor, and I've got money. I'm waiting on one right of entry. So I'm dealing with, I guess the local person here that owned that sold to somebody in Florida, and they've since sold it to somebody back here local under contract, so we're trying to get that last right of entry, and we'll be able to schedule it.
Yeah, all right. Oh, I know one more. Northumberland Rescue Squad had two buildings. One of them was in Reedville. That has been gotten rid of, but there has a Rescue Squad sign still down Reedville Way. We've got them on the Burgess building area, but we've still got one holding up for Rescue Squad down there.
So you're telling me I need to pull it out?
Yeah, there's no Rescue Squad there.
It's on 360?
Yeah. So I, I think it's actually on Fleaton Road, isn't it, Ronnie? Or is it on, is it on Fleaton Road?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, but if.
But the one that's no longer a squad building.
Yeah. Johnny, Todd would know where it is. And.
I talked to Todd about it.
Okay. And does the county want Rescue Squad here in the county, in Heesville, since we do have station here? Think about it, if you, we may want it, because we do have, the paid crew is located right here in Heesville. But I'll let Luttrell and the chief talk it through, because people showing up anyway, but for slowing down traffic is what I'm thinking of. But they will let you know whether to request, I mean, to put it up.
Okay.
You got enough, don't you?
You're good?
Yeah.
Y'all making up for.
Thank you, Mr. Beal.
Oh, I got one more question.
Tommy's got one more.
This is in the construction you got on 360 there at Haynesville, right across from your place. How's that going? I'll ride by it occasionally, but it kind of looks interesting.
It started late. They're still supposed to finish, I think, end of November, or middle of November. I think it's the 15th of November is fixed completion.
Yeah.
So I ride through it twice a day. They're making progress laying pipe.
But I don't see where that's posted as a work zone. Is that correct? I know you got, but it's not the law enforcement work zone issue, I don't think.
It should be in 511 as a work zone. What are you, what are you referring to?
As if, if it's a true V dot work zone, then you got higher penalties if you get a ticket.
I would, I mean, it's a work zone. I don't know where else we would have to.
I'm sure the sheriff has said, you will sometimes see sign, higher penalties.
Yeah, I don't know that those signs are up, but it's still a work zone.
I just want, I don't want somebody to get a big penalty for that. People should, you, I slow down, but I'm just saying, because I understand the figure is right high, like $250 to $500 for a ticket in the work zone.
About a runway hit.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a resolution for Trey Felton. Mr. Basie, would you be so kind to read that?
Get him to come up.
Mr. Felton, would you come up, please, sir?
Whereas only 11 individuals from Virginia competed in round one of the Scripps National Spelling Bee held outside of Washington DC, and whereas every year millions of students from all over the country participate to qualify for the Scripps National Spelling Bee, and whereas for the first time ever, a northern ex-student qualified to compete in the Scripps National Spelling Bee, and whereas Trey Felton proudly represented the county of North umberland at the National Spelling Bee, the county recognizes all the hard work and dedication he has put into this competition while continuing to applaud him for making it thus far. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Trey Felton on such a great accomplishment and wishes him much success in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution is hereby adopted on this day, August 11, 2022.
Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work. We appreciate it. Now, next item is the update from Northumberland County School System. And I see we have Dr. Wargro here.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and supervisors. I think you have two packets that have been shared with you, and I was going to concentrate on the second page, which gives you an outline of our back-to-school calendar. This Wednesday and Thursday today, we welcomed 13 new teachers and had two great days with them. And then this coming Monday, August 15th, we are hosting convocation, and all of you are invited. It's at 8:45 in the morning in the auditorium. So if you do plan to attend, let me know, and we'll make sure to introduce you to our audience. So that's convocation that starts at 8:45 on Monday.
8:45, okay.
So the veteran teachers are returned Monday, they'll, you know, everyone will be back and preparing for the first day of school all of next week. We do have open house on Thursday, and then the first day of school is Monday, August 22nd. In other news, you have a school calendar that you might want to hang on to. It has some good information there, and I also provided you with our superintendent's weekly update that goes out tomorrow. And I have Mr. Bellows, our Director of Finance, to share our report.
Mr. Bellows, good to see you, and I did not mean not to recognize you.
No worries, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for having me here tonight, members of the board. I just wanted to follow up on a few things we talked about last time. We did launch our e-vendor payment process this week. That went really well. So we're now paying all of our vendors through an e-payment process, and we won't be issuing any more checks, so they'll be getting either direct deposits or checks directly from their vendor payering. So we're excited to have that off and running. The follow-up on those two, I talked to Ken Dickey at the VDOE about the monies for construction. Those two pots of monies, the approximately 1.2 million that we receive, will be receiving, will be starting in September, EDIs, will be getting two deposits per month for that funds. So at some point, we'll be bringing a special appropriation before you all, once the board decides on how they're going to proceed using those funds. The other one, the, the competitive grant project, they're still working on the details of that program, and Mr. Dickey said that he hopes that the Board of Education is going to have to approve those, so that'll take a little bit of time, but he hopes to have this program launched by the end of this year, the 1st of January, and then at that point, we'll have the details and see if we can qualify to apply for those particular grant funds. So that's sort of an update that I have. Do you all have any questions for me?
Any board members have any questions?
Glad to see both y'all here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's good to be here.
Yep, likewise.
Thank you all. Have a good rest of your meeting.
I'm glad to see you here. We missed you.
Thank you. Missed you guys, too.
And the only question, clarification on the uses of the monies, those two pots? Because I know you mentioned about the, one I thought was a scrillious, was extracurricular activity, athletic activities, because athletics is extracurricular.
Yeah, the one, the 1.2, roughly 1.2 million will be receiving our EDIs that can be used for anything except for those particular parking lots and athletic extracurricular facilities.
Well, put the track in and say that's for PE class. Hey, play games if you have to.
Anything else?
The board members got anything else? Nothing else?
Mr. Tomlin, you know, if you don't follow the civic rules of the federal government, they'll ding you later on down the road, and you'll pay it back, unfortunately.
Well, sometimes they ding you anyway, if you follow their rules, because they change the rules.
They find anything they can do to claw back money whenever they can, so.
But again, that, that one, I have some real big questions about it. It makes no sense, because athletics is part of education anyway.
Yeah, they always have. They put all kinds of stipulations in these things, and bevies of lobbyists control and write these things, so.
Oh, don't they, oh.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you for coming. All right, next item on the agenda is the county administrator's report. And Mr. Tadlock, I'll turn that over to you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The July building permit report, we had three new structures. Total construction cost for the month was about $4 million. Total construction cost year-to-date is about $34 million, which is about $4 million above this time last year. Do have a reappointment, Chris Crowley with the Planning Commission, District One is up for reappointment. He is willing to serve again.
I'll make a motion that, that we reappoint Mr. Crowley.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any other comment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is I need a motion to approve the transfer of funds in the amount of $75,000 from 10-264 as a supplemental appropriation to 3102-8006 for the Central Square Technologies. That's for the CAD system. And these monies are the donation portion of the sheriff's office funds that he had offered to offset some of the costs of the CAD program.
All right, motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The board had requested some additional information on the requests from RCC on the Ram Clinic. In your packet is the, are the localities which they sent funding requests to and what they've received to date, if the board wishes to have any further information on that, or how you all would like to proceed with that matter.
Any comments from the board?
If you want, we can bring that back up later.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see a little bit more participation from adjoining counties.
Yep, all right. We'll, we'll keep an eye on that and update you all on that one. Next item I have is we have three vehicles that we need to put out for a surplus. One is a 2006 Ford Explorer that has approximately 216,000 miles on it, 2009 Dodge Durango, 139,000 miles, and F-150, 2007 F-150 with 201,000 miles on it. And we would put, once these are surplus, we would put these out on Gov. Deals.
You looking for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion to, motion to put them out for surplus.
So moved.
I mean, I mean for sale.
Will he be making the motion or not?
I know, I can't tell whether he wants a motion. I'll make the motion to make sure.
Yeah, I get it right full on.
Yeah, I know. You ain't been doing it long enough. So I made the motion.
All right, got a second, Ronnie, a second. All right, got a second, Ryan, a second. Good enough. All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is we had our bid opening for the stormwater damage repair on August 4th. And low bidder was CTN Enterprises, Inc., at $137,216. If the board wants to move forward with that, or if you need some time to look at that, or how you all would like to proceed.
Any information that this bidder could not perform?
We reviewed the, the applications. There was nothing in that application that we saw that stood out to us. We are requiring a performance bond on this, so...
They can perform as low bid. Either we do it or we don't. So I make a motion that we accept the bid, the low bid, with a requirement of a performance bond.
With requirements of performance bond.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is we had voted on the fuel bids last month, and there was some clarification made to those fuel bids. And gasoline, diesel, heating oil was for variable and not fixed. And propane was fixed. So if I could get a motion to amend that and follow the, this bid.
Fuel boards already accepted it?
They have.
I move that we accept the corrected bid.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is for Virginia America 250 Commission, there's a resolution in your packet. And basically, the Virginia America 250 Commission was created by the General Assembly in 2020 for the purpose of preparing for and commemorating the 250th anniversary for Virginia's participation in American, in the American Independence. They were asking each locality to form a committee to participate in the Virginia 250. However, at one of the county administrator meetings, it was discussed to have the Northern Act Tourism Commission sit in for the four localities, so that you could have a unified voice rather than having multiple committees in the Northern Act. So if the board wishes to do that, I would just need your approval on the, the resolution to move forward with that.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve this resolution, appointing Northern Act Tourism Council.
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Next item I have is Northumberland County is eligible for $70,000 of ARPA monies. And this is coming from the Virginia Tourism Commission. And we have up to December 31st to submit a plan on the use of these monies. And the Northern Act Planning District Commission is willing to help us with this, and we can designate them to go in and do the reporting for us and different things. We are interested in looking at this a little bit further to see what opportunities are there. And we would ask that, the only thing that they would do is work with the Economic Development Commission on this matter to make sure what their suggestion is lining up with their goals as well.
Well, do you want action, potential action, or defer? To find out more information?
Well, I think if we could get the action to allow the Planning District Commission, Lisa Hall and her group to move forward with that. If I could get action by the board to move forward with that, I think that would be the best route. And then, I can update the board on that matter if we decide not to pursue that.
I move that we designate Northern Act Tourism Commission, Lisa Hall, to go forward with this, but report back to us to see what's going on. We can move forward, but we're not obligated at this point in time. Is that correct?
Well, it would be to go after the, the $70,000. But I know previously, the, the board has asked for us to bring any grant opportunities to the board. So one, we want to make you aware of it. But I guess, two, to move forward with pursuing those activities. And we can certainly keep you updated.
And is any county match?
No county match.
Okay, that's good. Still taxpayer dollars, but anyway.
All right, got...
I'll continue with my motion.
Your motion's all right? Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And I, I would like to recognize Mr. Bob Bullard, Executive Director. He just stepped into that, that role, and I just wanted to recognize him real quick. And not to put you on the spot, but just wanted to recognize he is here tonight, so...
Glad to see you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good to be here, thank you.
Thank you.
Put a name and face together.
Next item I have is the Planning Commission had wanted some clarification on what was being requested of them to examine regarding the solar project. Uploaded that, that document for the board. And wanted to check with you to see exactly what clarification you wanted to send back to the Planning Commission on that.
All right. Mr. Tadlock, I would like to make a motion that we resend the solar ordinance back to the Planning Commission for a complete redo. And we need to include items as decommissioning, bonding, fire protection, environmental issues. Come up with as many ideas as we can as far as what we need for fencing, grass cover, access, access to the property in case of emergency. We need a time limit on that. And board members, feel free to give me any other suggestions that you may have.
Well, the other thing is, was R1, Mr. Jett mentioned, I mentioned R2. Understand they're concerned about, you may have what would normally be R2, which is A1, because property was zoned the way it was used, not the way traditional zoning would. I'd like them to consider the possibility of an overlay zone that would possibly be able to deal with water come back to a certain distance, so you don't have to rezone. And that would be too much trouble to rezone everywhere. But something as a consideration that it's, anything, it's, the concerns are obvious we have with it. We do need renewable energy, but it needs to be done in a way that is beneficial, not just for the landowner, but also for those who are impacted by it in many ways. And the other thing is to look at, I know our current ordinance looks at acreage. I want to look at, compare the megawattage produced. Because if you ride up, well, one, if you go to, go through Whitestone, over on the left past Ockman Road, there's a solar farm there. But instead of having just the one panel, they have two panels. So if you've got five acres and one panel, five acres of 10 will produce twice as much.
So you're...
Potentially. So I think you, because if you're looking at the breaks of five megawatts, which is where you break with DEQ doing the water qualities, soil erosion, I'd rather look at the, what they produce in addition to how much and what type of land they impact on.
All right, so add that to my motion. And then, we want to make sure we look at how many acres of land that we do want to put into solar farms. Mr. Jett, you have any comments?
Just, I'd like to see some ordinances from the other counties.
Yep.
Surrounding counties.
That's my second motion.
Yeah?
That's my second motion.
That's what I see, and as much information as we can get. Maybe we learn something from the problems it run into. The good and pros and the cons of what they've done.
Yeah. Staff, have any comments? Any things that they are thinking about?
The, the only thing, as we're looking at this, not to say that we would do this, but examine the revenue sharing aspect.
Revenue sharing, let's add that into the motion.
Um, just to examine it, I mean, it's...
When, I saw the proffer, and I saw what it would mean. It wouldn't mean hardly anything worthwhile.
$7,000 a year.
Yeah.
That's, doesn't do anything, really.
And then, then if there's problems, are we then liable for it? So I've, I know, I've seen the figures, and it's, and Lancaster did that, both the same figure, which I'm sure it was. So it's, I don't, you know what it has the appearance of. So...
All right, and the only other thing I'd like to add to that motion is that we, that the Planning Commission have, have some information sent to us for our November board meeting. That they go ahead and review this and have the information back to us for our November board meeting.
You just want the information, or do you want to be able to advertise it for a public hearing?
I would like to be able to advertise it for a public hearing.
Okay.
And if it's, all the thing is, if it's too much work, then I don't want to have them having a problem recommending a moratorium pending this, too. There's, the county attorney can tell you the process you would potentially have to go through. But anything we do sets the example, unless and until we change the ordinance.
Yeah.
Do you need another piece of paper, Mr. Tadlock?
I'm, I'm working on it. You're fine right now.
I've got the edges. All right.
Turn it sideways.
All right. Anything else? Any board member wants to add to it?
I mean, I'm not opposed to renewable energy. But we've also got to look at whenever this, a project, be it this, the ones we got on the board, so to speak now. But at some point in time, they will no longer be useful. The decommissioning, what is it going to be left with after decommission? If it's done right, can you put it back into farmland or timberland or whatever? I don't want to have, we've got junk ordinance for cars. I don't want us to have to have a junk ordinance for solar farms. And many solar farms are very visible. And it, again, I just want us to do for general, for clean energy, but also have a clean environment from that point of view, too. And the unfortunate thing is, the rural counties are becoming the supplier of solar farms for a lot of the urban suburban areas.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, that's enough.
Mr. Jett, you have anything else?
No.
All right, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Yep.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, second motion. I would like Mr. Stuart McKenzie to get the app, get the solar ordinances from North, from Westmoreland, Richmond County, Lancaster, Essex, King and Queen, Hanover...
Skip King William, huh?
I guess, skip King William, King William also. Middlesex. What does it have, one up there, Meckenburg?
Meckenburg, South Side, way down south.
No, I don't mean Meckenburg. Um, one other side of Fredericksburg up there.
Spox, Ane, Stafford, Culpeper. Uh, depends on how far west you want to go or north.
Yeah. Any other counties you'd like to see ordinance from?
Check Gloucester.
Gloucester.
I'm not sure where that big farm on the left is.
Yeah, Gloucester.
I think that's Gloucester County.
Yeah.
All right. Any other counties? All right, I'd like to see Mr. McKenzie get these ordinances to the Planning Commission for their August, the, what, 18th meeting? Three days prior to the meeting. And also a copy sent to all board members and staff. And we may have to add another county if we come up with something in the future. All right, got a motion to have a second?
Second.
He's second, Ryan is second.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
The one thing, it does not impact anything until potentially 2024. But the governor signed a bill on small solar generating, or small energy generating, non-renewal, uh, renewable. And they had one in that law that anything affected 10 acres or more, you had to have a mitigation plan. Because impacting prime farmland, timberland, et cetera. But the regulations have not been approved by DEQ. But just, they can look into a mitigation plan, but they can't require it, because we don't have anything to look. But that's telling you the state's also looking at the impact on timber farmland, too.
Yeah.
Well, we know solar's coming. We just need to be prepared for it.
Yeah.
All right, no other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's see. Mr. Tadlock, you have anything else?
Uh, just a couple more items. The next item...
Mr. Tadlock, can you wait one minute? I got Jim on the phone. Maybe he's trying to get in.
Hello? Yeah. Hold on, I will put it on speaker. I'll get my phone to Morgan, so she can see if she can connect you.
Thank you.
I didn't want to ignore it, obviously.
No, don't want to ignore it. No, we got, we got time, we'll wait.
Yeah.
Glad you'd make it.
Sorry.
Don't worry, we'll be late.
We didn't miss anything.
Didn't miss a thing, that's right.
Your nephew keeps calling me. Your nephew keeps calling me. Brett.
Mr. Long's trying to get in, he's having some challenges, like call me, so.
Might be a long time ahead.
Waiting on a board member.
I'm running out of juice.
Yeah, I know, it does add on me too sometimes.
You need a topic?
No, I'm good. I charged it early today. I have contact though.
Oh, well, you're welcome to it if you need it.
Especially when you try to do an update, it has got to be twelve then.
It did it early today, I got mine done early.
Yeah.
You gonna be able to get on? Y'all want, y'all want to give him a minute too, see if he can get on? Yeah? All right. Able to get on?
Maybe through his phone.
He should, he should be able to get on through his laptop, if he's got internet connection, that'd be easiest way. I'm sending Morgan down there.
What?
Send Morgan down the road to you, don't I?
Send Curtis down there. Robert, send Robert down there.
Yeah.
That'd be a good one. Is it, is it working on you? Uh, you're getting in.
Yeah, she's in.
Well, I think we've.
All right, how much longer y'all want to wait?
I'm ready to move forward, I hate to say it, but Morgan could get in and there must be some technology issues on Jim's side, so.
All right, well, let's, let's move on forward. Mr. Tadlock, will you finish up?
Yeah, we can, uh, try and call him and put him on speaker.
Yeah, we can get him on speaker and nothing else.
Yeah.
Yeah. Give him, give him his mic.
Mike, check the phone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What number did he use?
He.
Mr. Long?
He's got him.
Are you, you still having troubles getting in? All right, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone with my phone. All right, we'll, we'll try it that way. All right, you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Long, can you speak? Just make sure the audience can hear you.
Yes, uh, Jim Long.
Okay. I, I think we got you.
Okay.
All right.
Hello, Jim, glad to have you here. All right, Mr. Tadlock, if you'll keep on?
All right, so the, um, next item I have is regarding the chief local elected officials board. The board had selected me as the primary member on that board. However, I'd like to ask the board to have Mr. Basie listed as the secondary or alternate member to that, uh, board in case I can't make some of the meetings. Basically, the Clio Board works with staff from the Virginia Career Works and deals with workforce matters.
All right, do I have a motion to put Mr. Basie there? I'll make a motion, put him there.
I'll second a motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other, excuse me, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Next item I have is just more for your information. Um, I've been serving as the staff liaison to the Economic Development Commission. And, uh, Mr. Basie has expressed some interest in, uh, serving in that capacity. So I don't believe I need any action by the board, I just want to bring you up to speed as to staff changes that are taking place. Next item is the pump and haul matter, and we had sent this previously to the health department. And that was actually, uh, Mr. Eads had sent the, it was action taken by the board, and Mr. Eads had sent that in. But it was never signed by the health commissioner. So in order for us to consider pump and haul matters, uh, we do need to make application, uh, to the health department to be able to do those types of, of facilities. And we do have one that was under that, it's, uh, Cockles Marina. And just wanted to check with the board to see how you want to proceed on that.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
The question I had was, it looks like the county has to enter into a contract with the health department?
I'm buying, glad.
Or a contractor?
That, as some of the discussions that, uh, Mr. Gregory and I had earlier, it sounded like we have to make application. But then we work out the details, uh, with the local health department on that matter. If I understand that correct.
Because I don't want us to be liable for pump and haul.
No, and, and typically what we do here is, uh, we have the property owner, um, contract with a septic hauler. And the, the county remains out, out of that.
It's like to me, more, of course, this is the health department, but it'd be better to, the county approve pump and haul as a process. But then the applicant, whoever's doing the pump and haul should be the one doing the application and any contract. But if that's how they're doing it, I don't think we've got much choice. And there are places that the only way they can operate is with pump and haul.
Yeah, that's correct. All right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I move, we do this, but with a clear understanding that the county will not be liable. But all liability will be on landowner and or contractor.
All right, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. T.
All right, next item on the agenda would be approval of the check register. It's a pleasure of the board, do you want to approve it or, or wait?
Well, if we don't approve it, they don't get paid.
Yes, sure.
Yep, that's the next thing.
I move that we approve it.
All right, I'll second it. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is board comments. And we'll start with you, Mr. Tomlin.
I would ask the county attorney to look in and report back by the September meeting, the bond referendum process. You know, making application, when you, when you can do it and stuff like that. And I'm specifically thinking about this as a possible financing means for the radio system. Not seeing we enter into any action right now, but just know the timings and things like that. Because if I remember right, we can't have a bond referendum with a general election. At least the elementary school was in April as opposed to November. But just find out, I know we got a petition to circuit court, and just the timing of it too, and what, what do we have to do? With no action, but just to know what our process is. Thank you. And the other thing is, in this building, could we look at the possibility of having motion sensitive light switches? Like if you go in the restroom, sometimes the light's off, you got to remember to cut it. I mean, newer buildings, more cost, eh, energy efficient, either you leave the light on or you leave it off. And some places, having lights off is not good. You go in the men's bathroom, I'm not saying the women's, the outer door area light is on, but the one in the facilities is off. But I, motion, you know, activated, I don't know the cost and the, what it would be able to do.
It's not that expensive.
I wouldn't think so.
It really, it can, it can be put on any of those switches.
But just look into that, that's what, it would make sense to save some money. I mean, some places, we got to keep the light on for security purposes, but for non-security places. And safety, somebody going in a restroom where some places, I don't want them potentially getting hurt. You got security in the restroom, they could have a problem.
Yeah.
So just look into that, and that's all I got.
Mr. Jett, you have anything? I have nothing.
Oh, sir.
All right, I don't have anything. All right.
See, Mr. Long has anything?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask him. Mr. Long, you have anything?
Uh, not at this time.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item would be, we need to convene in closed meeting. Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir, I need the board to, uh, motion, uh, convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section two point two thirty seven eleven A one, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. I invite it to attend the closed meeting as necessary of the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county attorney, because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, section two point two thirty seven twelve F.
I make a motion to conform with what Mr. Tadlock read.
All right, all right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going into the next room for a closed meeting. And we'll be back here as soon as possible.
Got him on?
Got him on.
Okay.
All right.
I move that come out of closed meeting.
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Long.
You want to make the other motion?
All right, I have the statement. I need a motion from the board of supervisors to return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
I move to conform with what Mr. Tadlock read.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Now, wait a minute, I'm sorry, back up a minute. Vote, roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Tomlin.
Aye.
Mr. Jett?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Any aye? Now, now we're back on track.
Yep.
All right. Our next item on the agenda, and ladies and gentlemen, I'll welcome everyone here tonight that wasn't here at an earlier session. And our first item, uh, I, next item would be public comment. We have a public comment period. Anybody would like to speak, please come up to the micro, microphone, state, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Bob Kane, uh, five ninety-two Highland Point Road, Washburn, Virginia. It's my understanding that the board or the county is entertaining a renewal of a contract with Breeze Line. And I would like to make a couple of points, emphasize a couple of things that I would like for them to be addressed as they consider whether to renew or not renew that contract. Uh, one of them is cost. Cost is always a factor with everything. But based on my experience, I signed up with Breeze Line for all three services, something a couple of months less than three years ago. The cost for the three services without any change in service has gone up thirty-three percent. That's eleven percent per year. In addition to that, I have a notice on my latest bill that I suspect there'll be another increase in November. So by any measure, that kind of cost increase is not justifiable, but it's a monopoly. So I don't know what I can really do about it, other than ask the county to exercise its influence during the renegotiation process. The other issue I'd like them to address, uh, is service, particularly customer service, particularly the phone line. When you call for cus, for service, you get a recorded message, and the last one I got said, uh, we'll respond, you have thirty-two minutes. Let's put you on in thirty-two minutes. Five minutes later, you get another message that says you'll be on in thirty-one minutes. Another five minutes, you get a message that says you'll be on in twenty-eight minutes, and on and on and on. So just trying to get a hold of them for service is next to impossible, at least inconvenient. Now, to be honest, when you get somebody, they're very pleasant, and they do send somebody. And I've had submission, significant problems in the last month, and I did get a credit to my bill, so I'll say that. But it's very annoying to have these things going out and talking to an answering machine that tells you it'll be thirty-one minutes. So those are the only two major issues that I would like you all to fully consider as you negotiate this new contract.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to speak?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Name's Louis Christian, um, reside in Waldorf, Maryland, 11656 Kipling Drive. Born and raised in Northumberland County. S- 16003 Northumberland Highway is my home address here, where my mom still resides. My wife and I just recently purchased the property, but my grandparents own, uh, fifteen three eighty-five Northumberland Highway, uh, previously owned by Luther and Helen Christian, now deceased. Uh, we've been attempting to get the property burned, uh, so we can rebuild at some point. Been working with the fire chief, Mr. Keizer, for two years to try to get that done, let him use it as a training exercise. Haven't made much progress, so I'm here to try to get some assistance and support with getting that moving forward if I can. So just need to know what the next step is, if someone could assist me with that, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right, anyone in the ver, anyone in the virtual world would like to speak tonight as public comment? Anyone in the virtual world would like to speak on public comment? Nobody. All right, well, I will close the public comment period. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we will get back to our public hearings tonight. Sorry for the little bit of delay. And first is a carryover from last month, and, uh, Mr. Marston?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chan.
That's the carryover for Mr. Haney on his solar farm, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's, we've had a public hearing on this, and we don't have all our board members here tonight, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we continue it over to the September the first meeting.
All right. Motion to continue it over till September the first meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, have a second? Any other, uh, comment? All right, if not?
How many board, what, are the board members not there, online, right?
Yeah, we, we are missing Mr. Brand.
He's not online.
And he's not online. He's, he, he's very sick.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he is, he is, he is very sick.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Aye.
All right, uh, excuse me, our next item is a request by Daniel N. Swarley, owner for a conditional use permit to, to construct a private school. Anyone here? Mr. Swarley, are you here tonight? Would you come up and speak, please, sir, if you want?
I'm just a landlord.
Uh, would you come up to the microphone, sir? If, if you don't want to speak, that's fine, but I, I think you want to put in a, have a, you have an application for a school. I hope that's correct.
Correct.
Yes. Do you want to comment on what you want to do there?
I think we're, we're good with, with that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Marston, you have any comments on it before we open the public hearing?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, other than I have not received any correspondence.
They have to read it, or the application, or other people have.
Yeah, would, would you read the application, Mr. Uh, Marston?
Like you normally do.
Uh, request by Daniel N. Swarley, owner for a conditional use permit to construct a private school on property zone A1 Agriculture. Property is shown as tax map parcel seven dash one dash forty-eight, and is located adjacent to 1645 Flute Plain Road.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marston. Any board members have any comment?
My question is this, is this a private school for outside students or members of their group?
Members of their community.
Since it's a religious group, they could get the religious exemption for education. Does that apply also to the building? Well, because obviously, I do know very well the, if an application was made to the school board for, for religious exemption under the compulsory education, no school system would question it, because nobody, who wants to figure out who's an edu, who's a school, I mean, who's, what's an education, or what's a religion versus a school? But then, they may have an exemption from the requirements of, uh, Virginia Department of Education, but does then that apply to any structure that they've used? So, but we, we certainly can have a public hearing and go forward with that.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other board members have any comments before we open the public hearing? If not, I will open the public hearing. Our first person that would like to speak tonight is, uh, Mr. Bob Kane.
I think he spoke on a different.
He's spoken, so he's gone. Our next person is David Thomas. They've gone, Ann Thomas. Louis Christian. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
He's, he spoke on a different issue, so.
Spoke on a different issue, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. I just wanted to, um, uh, say that I appreciate the position that you've taken on being thoughtful about trying to plan for responsible solar energy in this county. I've had the opportunity to read the.
Ma'am, we're not on solar right now, we're on a school issue.
Oh, I, well, I couldn't hear, I'm sorry. At any rate, I congratulate you on the comprehensive plan you've written and the economic plan, and I think that they're great guidance documents.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next person is Dwight.
Hassler.
Hassler, all right.
I don't need to speak, we'll talk next month.
Okay. All right, would anybody else like to speak on this issue of the school? Anybody like to speak on the issue of the school? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak on the school issue? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak on the school? No one? All right. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and the issue is now before the board.
Carryover. I think since we carried over the carryover, I think it would best if we carry this over to next month, and also the county attorney can find out whether they even had to come to the board at all, for the, for the structure. For any future applications too, so, but I am not opposed to the school, I can say that right now.
Yeah.
I, I'm not opposed either. I have the opportunity to meet, uh, with my team like that, and I think it's, uh, a good idea, I'm not opposed to it either.
So what you're saying, Tom, that you get her to look into, to see if it's, what is?
The structure itself requires board approval. They can go, A, there's three or four different ways a person can do homes, uh, they can do schooling, homeschooling.
Right.
There is the religious exemption, and, and they had one that even California didn't approve, the correspondence type stuff, but anyway, their religious exemption is looked at is, if they apply as religious exemption, the school will give them the requirement, they don't have to go to the school, and they don't have the Virginia Department of Education's long-drawn-out stuff. And the question is, since they'd be exempt from the DOE stuff, does the building which does not exist yet, as we know, does that require our approval for the, the use, since it's not involving the general public, but their own group?
Right, oh, the question, why have we been in favor of it, why couldn't it be approved? And then you can still kind of do the way.
I don't have a problem.
To move forward with it.
I'm, I'm not.
Still, it'd be a good question, you know, to get an answer to, but we can move forward.
I mean, I don't have a problem, I, I want to support them, but I also, if they don't, if they don't need to do it, we want to make sure we're good, but.
Exactly.
I move that then, what are proposed conditions, Mr. Marston, before we get too.
Well, I'll second, yeah, I'll second.
The suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to the Virginia Department of Health, and the building shall comply with the Uniform Statewide Building Code.
Did you have to special?
You're talking about.
That's, that's the whole question.
Department of Health as far as facilities for waste?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole question.
That's very right.
Yeah.
Did y'all understand the conditions that he put, put on it?
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the whole question, is.
Good, you're good with that?
Regulatory requirements can be, uh, applied, imposed upon them for the school, right? So that's what I'm going to be looking into. So I, you know, if he's suggesting you impose those, and you make a decision to do so, then you're not allowing Tom to answer that question first, right?
And then if, the Uniform Building Code might require something greater that they can meet.
That's right.
So, I withdraw my motion, and make a motion to continue order to find out what requirements they have as far as building, given the fact that they're religious, uh, they're gonna do pro, their own education, because we've got the Uniform Building Code, whether they've got to have all the requirements, which potentially includes the handling of sewage. And electricity.
All right, so you're withdrawing your motion, so let's, let's make a motion to carry it over until our September first.
That's my motion.
Board meeting.
Again, it's not opposed at all, but we've got to make sure that they are quote, are protected appropriately. And we don't put a burden on them also.
All right, do we have a second to that?
Second, yeah.
Got any other discussion on to it? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, your, uh, your application has been carried over until our September the first meeting, where, where our county attorney is going to give us some more information on to it, and then we'll, you can, you come back on September the first at seven P.M., and we'll give you a decision then, okay?
It's not denying.
It's not that we are denying it.
We're just trying to get it right.
Yeah, we want to make sure everything is a hundred percent right for you. Yeah, okay?
Thank y'all.
All right. I don't have any other public hearings on the agenda tonight. Next item is, uh, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move. Do we need to still, anything you know of?
I don't know of anything at this time.
We just call a special meeting, we need to.
Yeah.
All right, I second it, Jim.
We, we both know, uh, those two probably had, uh, on the first, right?
Correct.
Yes, on the first, Mr. Long. All right, I have a motion, a second, any other com, any other?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a statement?
Yes.
We are having our meeting September first, which is different than our regular meeting time. We generally meet the second Thursday, so I just want, want that for clarification, that we are meeting September first, at five thirty.
All right.
Yeah, I've been joined by Zoom one of Cruz.
All right, if there's no other, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for coming tonight, and, uh, look forward to seeing you back on September the.